Good afternoon. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Texas Southwest College District. Board members present today are Ms. Rosemary Bredele, Ms. Dolly Zimmerman, Dr. Roberto Robles, Mr. Jose Herrera, and Dr. Julia V. Garcia. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Garcia to make an introduction.
Are you in? Or have we?
Well, I guess so. Thank you, sir. I would like to introduce Dr. Vincent Solis to introduce our special guest today.
I'm sorry. So, I didn't look at it.
Good afternoon, Dr. Garcia. Chairman Gonzalez. Today, it's my privilege and honor to introduce members of our Student Government Association. I'd like to give you just a brief bio about them. Matthew Kendall, our president, has been in student government since two years now. He's an international business major. He's accompanied tonight by Mrs. Ruby de la Fuente, who is the SGA Vice President of Public Relations, and she's been in student government for a year and a half. Mr. Kendall has been the president of student government since January, and he'd like to say a few words on behalf of the students along with Ms. de la Fuente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Dr. Garcia, and board members. First off, I would like to express the appreciation of the students for your efforts concerning the border wall and its impact on our campus. Last semester, the Student Government Association passed a resolution taking a stand against the border wall being built that would have a negative impact on our campus in any way. In an effort to ensure that existing groups conducting anti-wall activities were not cannibalized by the efforts of the student government, the Senate decided that individual members would join preformed organizations offering assistance as possible. After the federal government filed their lawsuit last week, the Student Senate revisited the issue at an informal organizational meeting. During the meeting, two problems were identified. First, although the university and the university's student newspaper have focused on the issue, a large portion of the student body remains unaware of what is currently transpiring with the wall issue and what is proposed to transpire in the future. Second, there is no single group organizing the dozens of individual groups who are conducting anti-wall activities and educational forums. In response to these problems, the Student Senate formed a committee named Scorpions and Allies Against the Wall. The committee has two broad mandates. The first mandate is to further educate the student body about the wall issue and how the wall will impact the campus both in the short and long run, and provide updates on the wall issue in a manner that is supplemental to the efforts already being conducted by the university itself and the university's student newspaper. The second mandate is to provide a forum in which existing anti-wall groups can come together and collaborate on programming and events, as well as assisting in the development of multi-group programming and events. Ruby de la Fuente is the chair of the Scorpions and Allies Against the Wall Committee, and would like to give a short update on the developmental work completed so far.
Ruby? Thank you, President Kendall. Good afternoon. I'm going to be a little bit more informal, just because I want to emphasize the importance of this. As you know, there has been a lot of activity against this, but it's been very separate, different groups, and it is incredibly important now to unite our efforts and do this together. And it's very important. And Dr. Garcia, thank you so much for fighting. This is incredible, what you're doing. And I went to Austin last weekend, to the Student Advisory Council. We didn't get to touch on this. I really wanted to, but I just want to tell you that people are speaking about it. It's just, we've hit a point where we just need to really work on it. And I'm a little nervous right now, because I just want to say that this is very important. So, so far, I've spoken to five student leaders from their respective organizations, and so far, it's CAB, Alpha Chi, Sigma Psi Delta, the Committee Club, and the Communication Council. Also, of course, with SGA, I get to know a lot of the student leaders from the campus, and they're willing to do whatever it takes. So, we're meeting next Wednesday at 12:00, and we are going to discuss the different ideas between everyone, and hopefully, we'll come into an agreement to see what we want to do. I'm passing a resolution. I'm presenting it to the Executive Board. In fact, we're meeting right after this. Stating to have a budget, so we can have a forum, passing information, and maybe a resolution to what we can do together as students. Again, thank you very much for your efforts. We're going to try really, really hard to do this and do this well, and I promise I will do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your concerns.
Mr. Chairman, just thank you for your leadership and accepting the positions of leadership. Anytime, that's always a difficult decision to make, when you have to take time away from your studies and your family to do this extra work. And this time, it's particularly important that we have strong leadership, so I thank you very, very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Robles?
Thank you for your comments. I would like to have you all also take the leadership role in encouraging, strongly encouraging, all students to register to vote. That is the only way we're going to make any impact in South Texas and across the country. If I register to vote, then register your conscience. So, if you don't vote, and you don't register to vote, then we're a silent peoples down here. So, please strongly encourage, check on that, make sure, double-check that people are registered to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robles. Thank you, sir. The boards will recognize Mr. Oliveira walking in, and Mr. Campirano is also present, so we have a full board tonight. The board will now convene into executive session as provided by Government Code, Chapter 551. The board will not convene into a regular session. We go to item number two, which is items discussed in executive session. And first is the, a contract and resolution for the purchase of Fort Brown Villa 2, Unit 3F. This is a motion to approve the earn twenty contract and resolution to purchase the property in the amount of $40,000, as discussed. Motion made by Mr. Campirano, second by Dr. Robles. Was that you? Mr. Herrera. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. The next purchase is the, the contract and resolution to purchase the Fort Brown Villa Unit 2, Unit 8D, for a purchase amount of $41,500. So, move?
Second.
Move by Mr. Herrera, second by Dr. Robles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to approve and consider the purchase of Fort Brown Villa Unit 2, Unit 14F, for a purchase price of $49,000.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Bredele, second by Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
Skip one.
Which one did I skip?
7D.
7D. I would entertain a motion to approve the acquisition of Fort Brown Villa 2, Unit 7D, in the amount of $42,000. Move? Motion made by Ms. Oliveira, second by Mr. Campirano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. And the final item on the acquisition list is the motion to approve the purchase of Fort Brown Villa 1, Unit 5007, in the amount of $45,000. Motion made by Ms. Bredele, second by Dr. Robles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. We now move to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes of January 17th meeting. I ask that you please look at those minutes, and I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Move that we accept the minutes as they are?
Motion's been made by Dr. Robles, second by Ms. Bredele. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. Move on to item number four, as speakers to agenda items and public discussion. We have Mr. Alberto Barrera, who will have two minutes to address the board.
Honorable board members, Madam President, and my fellow Americans, it is a sad day today, when the federal government asks you for a little favor, and you turn your own government down. It's a sad day, when the elected trustees of this institution put property investment above the safeguard of our national security. Grow up, said the Department of Homeland Security, Mr. Charkov, referred to some valley public officials who rather side with a few unpatriotic, greedy landowners who live here, but have no concern in protecting this glorious nation for our fellow young people. I'm glad that the system Board of Regents in Austin, if I'm not wrong, unanimously adopted a resolution that pledged support for DHS surveyors on campus grounds. Our local trustees and president refused to give consent for the Department of Homeland Security to come aboard and do their work. Ms. Garcia, our president, honorable president, stated that the university has found itself in the middle of a national debate, insinuating that the fence is a national debate. I do not concur. I rather, it's rather a national necessity and a security for the survival of our beloved nation in this time of world terrorism and tension. This campus is more at risk without the fence, where a disgruntled terrorist can come from Mexico and kill half a dozen of our students in the classrooms. It's a deterrent, at best. Our troops are dying to keep our nation safe, and we don't want to do at least something for, to save, for a sacrifice for our safety and America's safety. What are we to tell the parents if the terrorists do come across from Mexico into the campus? Look at the militarization of troops across Matamoros. What does that indicate, people? Probable trouble, possible trouble. Is property investment more important than our students and our national security? I don't think so. First and foremost, it is America's survival as a nation that is at stake, rather than property investment. I hope and pray that the campus, that we won't have a campus massacre like it occurred up in east campuses up in the east, where a crazy nut could come and kill dozens of our students, because you refuse to assess land to the cap, to the surveyors. A fence is just one of the tools, or to raise the levy, to protect our population and keep terrorists out. This will also help from the distinct destructive flood of people who have no right to be here in our nation in the first place. We see a nation of laws. We are a nation of laws, and no one is above any law. This message must be passed undiminished to those stillborn and others. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Alberto. Just a point of clarification, the UT Regents did not approve the, the wall being, the right of entry of the government on our campus. In fact, they passed a resolution opposing their right of entry, and, in essence, followed our concerns, and support our concerns, in that they not have a right of entry to our campus.
Did I read to you on the wrong page?
Yes, sir, you did.
Where they did approve a resolution.
They approved the resolution in favor of our opposition to the wall. So, and, and I would, at this time, make a formal declaration that I'm thankful for the Regents for their support in their resolution, which, in essence, supports our beliefs on our campus. Thank you, sir. Item number five is a resolution concerning the adoption in support of the Big Read Program, and I ask Dr. David Pearson to please introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. One of the most important tasks that we have as educators, as members of a higher education community, is to help expose our students and our community to the triumphs of human creativity and achievement. Great ideas in music, scientific advances, masterpieces of architecture and the visual arts, and, of course, the great works of literature. Tonight, we'd like to make the board aware of one particularly creative way to get folks to read great literature, and in the process, helping restore reading to the center of American culture. Please allow me to introduce John Hawthorne, who is our university archivist at the Oliveira Library, who is going to tell us about the Big Read.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson, Dr. Garcia, Chairman Gonzalez, and other members of our board. I am pleased to announce that we have received a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts to bring the Big Read Program to the Brownsville community. We are one of 127 communities nationwide to be participating in this project. It has been developed by Chairman Dana Joya of the NEA to, as Dr. Pearson said, restore reading to the center of American life. There have been a number of studies done that show a decline in reading, especially a decline in reading of great literature. We, as part of this project, are going to be doing a series of public events in and around the Brownsville community. We have chosen one book to center these activities on. It is To Kill a Mockingbird by Harper Lee. Some projects we are going to be doing, we're going to have a number of events in BISD secondary school libraries. We are going to have outreach events around Brownsville. We're going to be conducting events on Padre Island and in Port Isabel as well. The city of Port Isabel is going to be showing the To Kill a Mockingbird movie on the lighthouse on one particularly memorable evening. Some of the other good things we're going to be able to do, we've been able to hire some student interns to work on this project. One of them is actually here with us tonight. You'll be hearing more about this. We invite any of you in this room to participate and attend some of these events. There's going to be a formal press release. There's going to be an opening ceremony, March the 2nd, at Sunrise Mall. And a particularly positive part of this is that we chose to do some events in Matamoros and at the National Orientation Meeting in Minneapolis, Minnesota. The chairman of the NEA himself was particularly pleased with this. We had a meeting with him, and we're introduced to their Director of International Activities, and they have given us verbal, a verbal commitment to be a pilot community for something called the Big Read Mexico. They hope to move this project not just to the United States, but to our friends in Mexico, and we are going to be one of three pilot communities to conduct outreach events with our friends across the river. So, a small example of something positive we're being able to do in the midst of some of these negative stories. And I would now like to introduce Lily Galindo, Adrian Hernandez. We're not going to introduce them, but they are going to pass out materials for you, the Reader's Guides to To Kill a Mockingbird in both English and Spanish, as well as a complimentary copy of the book, To Kill a Mockingbird. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much.
Isn't this a book that set you up to, in your law career, Mr. Oliveira?
Actually, it was one that got me interested in it. Fabulous book.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good choice, good choice of person.
Thank you.
That's who'll be interested in this.
John, thank you so much for your effort. You, you do a lot of things for us, and this, this is a huge effort, and we appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the gift.
I might just mention also that John was responsible recently for hosting a, a panel that also was in Matamoros first, and then in the United States, here in Brownsville, later that day, and that was the celebration of the 160th anniversary of the signing of the Treaty of Guadalupe Ivallo. And it was a wonderful, wonderful, I attended the one on, on the US side at the Brownsville Heritage Center, and it was a marvelous event with many, many folks participating. Thank you. Thank you very much for all of the effort that you do, and thank you especially for this. Appreciate it.
Great book. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez, we need a motion to adopt a resolution in support of the Big Read Program. It's presented.
I'll make that.
Motion's been by Ms. Bredele, second by Dr. Robles.
I'll concede to our teacher.
All in favor of adopting this motion? Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. Item number six is the Business Affairs Partnership Committee Report. This is the, item is the adoption of resolution granting certain tax exemptions to certain historic sites under the '08 Heritage Plan. Mr. Campirano?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Business Partnership Committee met on Monday, and one of the items for consideration was the participation for 2008 in the City's Heritage Plan. The request is in keeping with our community university's interest and commitment to restoration and preservation of historic properties. The financial implications to the district would be a total of $8,615.68 of tax foregone for 43 properties. The description of the properties, I think it's a catchy agenda package, and this is included in our 2009 budget. This really kind of represents an increase over last year of $1,135, so it isn't a significant impact on the university or on our taxes or on our budget. Mr. Gavito, with the City of Brownsville, a heritage officer is here this evening, and so is Mr. Peter Goodman with the City of Brownsville, so if there's any questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer those. We did discuss this at the committee level, and the committee does recommend, and I would move, that we accept the resolution granting certain tax exemptions to certain historic sites under the 2008 Heritage Plan, as presented.
I second that.
Motion made by the committee. Mr. Campirano, second by Ms. Bredele. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Gavito, Mr. Goodman.
Thank you.
Elaborate presentation. The second item for consideration by the committee was a consideration and action on the proposal for the Mary Rose Carverness North and South Hall HVAC control system upgrade. This upgrade, it's a, it's an energy management system that will allow approximately 60% of the building with the computer control under Siemens program for the HVAC system there. The remaining 40% of the upgrade will be undertaken in next fiscal year. Siemens controls are a priority item, thus cannot be obtained through other means. This is a system that we deploy in other areas of the campus. The price for the system is $49,950, and it's a price that is obtained through the Texas Mass program, which is one of the procurement programs that the state has. Again, this would not address the entire facility, but it will certainly go a long ways towards addressing some of the problems. From what we heard from the staff, is they've got some real issues with some of those classrooms, either too cold or too hot, and, or simply you can only turn them on and off, and you can't control them. So, it fits into the campus strategy for energy management. The committee recommends, and I move to award the contract for the Mary Rose Carverness North and South Halls HVAC control system upgrade to Siemens control in the amount of $49,950.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Campirano, second by Mr. Herrera. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
The last item for consideration was the possible action on the proposal for the Recreation and Education and Anthropology Center weight and fitness equipment. This is for the rec center. It's for the procurement of the equipment that is necessary for that facility. This equipment is the weight and fitness equipment, and it is being purchased through a state group purchasing contract, and it is being done so at a savings of $160,000. That particular contract for the equipment is for, is for $327,283.28. It is in keeping with the budget on the program. The equipment was reviewed and selected by the Recreation and Human Performance Staff Department. The committee recommends, and I move, to accept the proposal for life fitness in the amount of $327,283.28, and authorize the vice president for planning and construction to execute the purchase order for this equipment.
Motion made by Mr. Campirano.
So move.
Second by Dr. Robles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
That concludes the report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Campirano. Move on to item number seven is the Physical Facilities Committee Report. Ms. Bredele's going to make a report on the competitive sealed proposals for construction of the Center for Early Childhood Studies, to be done by, also by Mr. David Pearson, Dr. Pearson, I believe? Or is it going to be?
I'm going to start.
Okay.
The Physical Facilities Subcommittee met on January 28th to review and discuss the competitive sealed proposals for construction of the early, the Center for Early Childhood Studies. Members present were Dr. Robles and I. Also present were Chairman Gonzalez, Dr. Garcia, Dr. Jose Martin, Dr. David Pearson, Dr. Wayne Moore, Ms. Veronica Mendez, Mr. Gilbert Gallegos, Ms. Diana Bravo Gonzalez, Mr. Joe Braff, Bradas and Associates. Dr. Pearson reviewed with the committee the program for the facility, including the observation rooms and the outdoor and indoor activity areas. The committee also heard from Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Gallegos on the project budget and the criteria for evaluation, for the evaluation of the proposals. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pearson to give us a brief overview of the program. Thank you, Dr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bredele. We'd like to have the opportunity to show the other members of the board who weren't present at that meeting, the, a brief overview of what the program is and where, where we As Mrs. Bredele said, we met on the, on the 28th of January, and, let's see, I haven't put on a camera. The Center for Early Childhood Studies is one of our bond projects, a $5 million project in total encompassing some 16,000 square feet. As board members have, have heard it over, over time, there is, there are five buildings, five individual structures here, four casitas in which much of the instruction takes place. You can see the instruction here, the instructional space in blue. There are instructional spaces, two classrooms in each of the four casitas. Also, in the administration building, there's a multipurpose room, which is off to the right, and an art room to the left. And we also consider the playgrounds, both adjacent to University Boulevard and to the Fort Brown Resaca, to also be instructional areas. Also, because this is a, essentially a laboratory school, it's not merely a daycare center, but also an opportunity for our students at the undergraduate and graduate levels to engage in research, there are several research areas. Some of the research, of course, could take place inside the instructional space, that is more obtrusive measure. is more obtrusive measures or hands-on types of measures. But here we see in orange some of the areas in which not only parents can observe their children, but also that research can be conducted in an unobtrusive fashion, and much of the time, that's the preferred method of watching young children because you simply don't interfere with the types of activities in which they're engaged. So we have one, one each, one observation room each in the casitas, and one adjacent to the multipurpose room in the administration building. In designing the facility, perhaps you recall, we've turned back to many of the historical reference that we have here on campus, but unlike a number of our other buildings which turned back for greatest inspiration to the brick buildings of Fort Brown, we turned back to some of the wooden structures of Fort Brown. Now, our administration building is reminiscent of Gorgas Hall in many ways, but the casitas turned back for their inspiration to some of the buildings of which there are very few remaining on our campus. And here we see a view, you'd be, this is on University Boulevard, as you'd be passing by the facility heading in the direction of downtown Brownsville. So a very lovely facility. You can see on the right-hand side, the brick administration building, reminiscent in many ways of Gorgas Hall, and the casitas in the back reminiscent of the officers' quarters and the commandant's quarters that exist and existed on our campus. One of the most important things that we have done in advancing this project has been to have our architects and our, and all of ourselves emphasizing the green attributes of the project. Specifically in this, we've been, we've turned to the use of insulated concrete form construction, that is ICF as we refer to it, and there are a number of advantages to ICF construction. First, and perhaps most importantly, is the energy, the expected anticipated energy reduction as a result of this. We see here 20 to 30%, but some of us have visited sites where they have ICF construction, and they're registering savings more on the order of 30 to 40%. So very, 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 very strong in terms of their ability to save us dollars on energy. Locally produced, we'll be buying the product, the ICF product locally. Recycled material content, the ICF forms, the styrofoam itself, much of it is made from recycled materials. And perhaps most interestingly here, it has absolutely superb resistance to wind and storm damage. The way that this, these facilities will be constructed, they'll be able to withstand probably category four to five hurricane winds and sustain very little damage. So although the folks who are building our rec center might, might differ on this, I would recommend that if a hurricane hits and you have to remain on campus, you head to the Center for Early Childhood Studies. One other, one other item is that the carpet that we've selected for, for use in the center, much of the fiber is from recycled materials. So we're making this as green as we possibly can. The project budget, they, it was just right on a $5 million total project budget from the, from the bond monies. And as you can see on the slide here, we have, we've spent about $1,200,000 for the contingency that's involved, for the furniture, the equipment, and, and the fee for our architects, which leaves almost $3,800,000 for actual construction costs. At the end of last year, we went out for competitive sealed proposals to see if we could bring in a contracting firm who could, who could bring the project cost within reason for us. We issued that again at the end of last year, and in December, we received five bids, four of which were valid bids, that is complete bids, and you can see the four companies represented here on the slide. Going by price, RGV Paint Center and Construction was clearly the winner on that, and, but we used other criteria as well in evaluating the proposals. Price was, of course, a very important criterion, but we also considered things such as experience with this particular type of construction, the bond, the bondability, the insurability of the companies with whom we deal, and so on. And so what we did was we assembled several groups. Initially, there was a group from Broadus and Associates accompanied by the architect, and later on, we shared with the Physical Facilities Committee the opportunity for all of us to rank in order the various competitors here who are looking to be able to secure this project from us. As a result of the seven, the seven evaluations we received, again from Ms. Mendez, from two of the Broadus folks, from Diana Bravo Gonzalez, and from Joe Rafek, and from Larry Janisek, and these were accompanied by evaluations by myself, from Dr. Wayne Moore, and from Dr. Jose Martin, the results of those evaluations turned in exactly the way that you would see here in terms of the dollars. So RGV Paint Center and Construction now is not only the lowest bidder, but we also consider that firm to be the best value respondent to our request, our request for We do have some small challenges in this. If you remember the figures, the, the proposal from RGV is $4,175,000. The funds available are approximately $400,000 less than, less than that, meaning what we need to do is energetically engage in value engineering to bring this project within budget. We've turned immediately, once, once we got these proposals, we turned to our experts from Broadus and Associates and asked them, is it conceivable? Is it feasible for us to engage in value engineering so that this project will be within budget? And the answer was an emphatic yes. And you can see here a number of the items that Mr. Rafek, Ms. Bravo Gonzalez, and others have identified. The redesigned landscape, something like that would be simply the expedient of using somewhat younger trees when we bring some new, some new landscaping, new plant material on. Type of select fill, there are numbers of qualities of topsoil, a lot of them are absolutely acceptable. We could go to a somewhat lower one, eminently acceptable, but save some dollars there. It would be possible to reevaluate the kitchen equipment, that is look for different, to different companies to provide the same quality, but at a lower price, and also reevaluate, reevaluate the hardware and the lighting fixtures. So we've been assured by our project managers that we can affect a minimum of $380,000 in value engineering on this project, thus bringing this project within budget. So, Mr. Chairman, we would recommend to the board that you select RGV Paint Center and Construction as the best value respondent for the competitive sealed proposals for construction for the Center for Early Childhood Studies, and we would, we would recommend that you authorize the Assistant VP for Planning and Construction to negotiate the contract.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson.
The committee recommends, and I move, to select RGV Paint Center and Construction as the best value respondent for the competitive sealed proposals for construction of the Center for Early Childhood Studies, and to authorize the Assistant Vice President for Planning and Construction to negotiate the contract.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Bredeau. Any more discussion on this one item?
So we'll see the contract at the next board meeting, or how will that work?
Yes, sir. Once the negotiations occur, we'll bring back the contract to the board.
Second, sorry.
Second made by, the second by Ms. Zimmerman. Any further discussion on this item? Any? No?
We're going to allow them to negotiate, to try to get down to 380, so I mean, that certainly can't get there if we can't negotiate.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Pearson.
No, there's a change, a temporary change order.
Okay, so item number right now is a change order. This is a, to engage in the contract with the Design Build Solutions for the construction of the ITech roof renovations.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. When the, when the board authorized the acquisition of the ITech facility, we knew there was need for major structural repairs in areas such as a thermal plant and especially in the area of the roof. It was also understood that as the facility was remodeled, an effort would be made to make appropriate upgrades to the structure, and we've been doing that. The thermal plant, as you know, has been upgraded. We're now renovating some 50,000 square feet of interior space, approximately two-thirds of the 540,000 square feet of roof has, has been or is in the process of being renovated. Right now, we have an opportunity to do even more for the roof, an opportunity that we'd like to bring to the board's attention. Because of savings and abatement costs, because of savings in roof deck repairs, because of some dollars from an EDA grant, we now have an opportunity to do an additional 44,000 square feet of roof repairs in a critical area of the ITech, that is in the area over the incubator and in the area where the incubator will soon be expanded. And here to provide the specifics of the project is Veronica Mendez, our Assistant Vice President for Planning and Construction.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson. When we started the renovation of the technical training center and the workforce training and the thermal plant, we renovated about 167,000 square feet of roof already. Last August, the board authorized us to go for a contract with Garland under a Texas-Mex contract for 142,845 square feet of roof. Now, the cost for that work is about $2 million, and that is currently under construction. It's about 98% complete. Now, throughout that work, we did have an allowance for deck replacement. You don't know how much deck you have to repair or replace until you actually tear up the structure. And so we had a savings of approximately $220,000 of deck that did not need to be replaced. So then, we had an opportunity to either acquire some additional savings for project renovation or for more roof repair. Now, just adjacent to this green area is the incubator space over at ITech, and that area has been leaking. We had done a patch on that roof when we did the renovation, and at that time, we thought that the roof was going to last a little longer, but it is in desperate need of repair. So we recommended to, to the Vice President and Construction Council that we add an additional portion of roof to, to this contract and apply those savings from the deck. We also, in the renovation space, achieved some savings from asbestos abatement that did not have to occur. We had set aside a little bit more money for that, and we had about $200,000 that we did not use for abatement, and we've already completed that work. So we are planning to apply those savings into this additional area. The area then is about 44,000 square feet, which covers the incubator and the incubator expansion. Now, the incubator expansion is going to be funded through an EDA grant for about $1.2 million. So we are utilizing some of those funds, about $100,000 of those funds, and apply them to this additional work. So the remaining of the funds then will come from capital improvement plan, funds from the Texas-Mex College budget. So we see that this is an opportunity to do some additional roof on the ITech, take care of some, some problems that we're having over the incubator, and be prepared for the new renovation. Now, it is a change order to the existing contract. The contractor that's currently there is doing a good job. It's Garland and has subcontracted with American Contracting, which is local, a local contractor. And so we are recommending to you tonight to approve this change order for $327,730.
Ms. Mendez, the proposed construction or renovations on the 44,000 square feet addition to the ITech Center would take us, how much of the guarantee would we have with those, with that renovation? For how long would it?
That's a 30-year warranty, sir. All of the roof that we've done so far is guaranteed for 30 years.
With the exception of the personal.
The technical training center portion only. The workforce training and the thermal plant renovation is a 30-year also.
And the previous work done on that specific site, how long did it last, and what was done proportionate to what's being proposed today?
We, yes, we had done a five-year patch on that roof, sir, underneath the incubator only. And as it happens, when you do a patch, you may miss portions of the expansion joints of the roof. You don't get all of the area covered, so we were really just trying to take care of the, the roof that we were going to be under, and, and, and we're having problems now.
So this would be, in essence, would be a new roof for that point?
Yes, sir. It's a completely new roof, guaranteed for 30 years.
How bad is it looking right now?
Sir, the pictures are gruesome, and I'm sure Jim can paint the picture very clearly to you. We have to put buckets underneath some spaces.
Has it been five years already?
Yes, sir, it has. We started actually, five years to the date. It's 2002.
One day after.
Yes, sir.
One day after.
2002 is when we did the repair.
Good thing it doesn't rain that much.
That's right.
What is the amount of money that is going to come out of the TSC capital budget? What's, what's the gap?
$77,000, sir.
Okay. Just a comment, we did actually did talk about business affairs, and the only other question that was raised was, the contract amount without the credit is almost $600,000, whether or not that had any implications over the 25% limit associated with the original contract. Apparently, because this is a Texas-Mex contract, it doesn't apply, so we're okay with that.
Ms. Bredeau, you have a.
No.
Okay.
I then make a motion to approve the change order to the contract with Design Build Solutions, a Garland company, for construction of the ITech roof in the amount of $377,730.40, and to authorize the Vice President for Planning and Construction to execute the change order.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Bredeau.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robles. Are there any further discussions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sitting here thinking that I represented Garland some 20 years ago, and so I don't know, but it's a caution, I'm abstaining from voting or any discussion.
I'll be noted.
And I just want a clarification. Is a change order in the amount of $598,493, or is a change order in the amount of $377,730.40? Because, you know, one, one represents the credit, which I understand, but what is going to be the amount of the change?
The change order is for $377,730.40.
Of which, you said 77, 70,000 is coming?
From the TSC Capital Improvement Budget. Yes, sir.
The balances are mediating.
There's been, there's been a, a motion, man, it's been second by Dr. Robles, I believe. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries.
One abstention, just.
And one abstention for the record, Mr. Oliva. We may have a legal conflict.
I would just add that, just so you recall, as Veronica said, this is the second EDA grant that we have gotten. These are very valuable. The first one was for about a million dollars. This one's another million dollars. Both of them come through the, through the efforts of Jim Holt and Tony and those working in, in that area. And the second one comes only because we were very successful with the first one, and that being that those jobs that had started in the incubator, those companies have actually graduated from the incubator and have now gone out into the community to hire more folks. So it's really, it's very, very important that the ITech continue to expand in this area and that we keep our tenants happy. And so this, this accomplishes the expansion using the EDA money and, and, and actually moving closer toward the goal of completing all of the renovation in ITech.
I, I had a question. Do you know what we've spent to date on, on, I guess, repairing the roof out there?
The, the original contract is about $2 million, so we're adding $300,000, and I cannot tell you exactly the rest of the technical training center. Those were part of the work. At that time, including the renovation, we spent about $13 million between the technical training center and the workforce training renovation.
So you could probably parse out of that 13 million, how much was for roofing?
Yes, ma'am. At that time, it would be a bucket.
So if you had to estimate?
About 2 million, $2 million, sir.
Total?
Total. Yes, because it's 167,000 square feet, about $10 per square foot.
And what, what percentage, I guess, of all the square footage of ITech does that represent, or what percentage?
We have, with the action you took today, just now, it's about 63% of the roof that has been repaired.
And, I'm sorry, so for 2 million, we've repaired 63%?
For 4 million.
4.3.
Yes, sir.
And we have a ways to go still.
I would invite the trustees to, if you have a chance, to take a ride out to the ITech Center, and when you see the, the center without the partitions, without the walls, you realize the enormity of its size.
Before they put up the fence, too, right?
And it is, and it is an enormous building that requires, you know, roof repairs. Exactly.
And EDA funds are federal funds.
So, thank you, Ms. Mendez. Appreciate it. Item number nine is trustee elections. I'm calling on Dr. David Pearson to present this item.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, we have an election scheduled for this May 10th for trustee positions number one and number two. In accordance with our promise to keep the board informed as the election season proceeds, I'd like to call on Mr. Alan Peaks, our Assistant Vice President for Facility Services, who also is serving now as our election agent for the district, to provide you with an update.
Please, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson. Good afternoon, members of the board. Dr. Garcia, I come before you today with a proposal to give notice and order for the May Board of Trustees election. Positions one and two are open, both for a six-year term. Positions one and two are open, both for a six-year term. Previously, you've authorized the district to enter into contract negotiations with the Cameron County Election Administrator to conduct the election. You have resolved to hold joint elections. You have also set date and time for drawing for place on the ballot. We are proposing thirty-eight polling places for Election Day and eight early voting sites, including one of each on our campus. These are the same polling places we have used in previous elections. There's been one additional early voting site added. We are requesting now a motion to adopt the notice and order of election.
Motion's been made by Mr. Oliveto, second by Ms. Breedlove. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None motion carries. Thanks, sir. Item number ten is Dr. Garcia's report to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have several items to report to you. You heard about a grant that we received a little while ago for the Big Read. It was a significant grant in the total of sixteen thousand dollars, and a very important one. Well, I have one that's also very significant to report to you. And when we talk about passing the torch on to the next generation, you can pass it on in a variety of ways. This one is in physics, and this is the next-generation physicist who is now bringing in yet a third generation. We received word this week that we received, through the efforts of Dr. Rick Janey, a one point zero five five million dollar grant from the National Science Foundation. This is extraordinary. You know that Dr. Janey is one of our younger physicists, and he is, he's been already lauded by NSF in a very special way that only happens normally after you've had a full career in science. So this young man is obviously, has a trajectory that we will, we will help, that we will ride with him. What the funding is for is for the Aracibo Remote Command Center, which is headed by Dr. Janey. The command center is in Setby, and if you walk into Setby and main door and take a left, and then take another left, you are in the command center, and it looks like you're in Houston Command Center. But this one commands the largest radio telescope in Puerto Rico, well, in the world, that is located in Aracibo, Puerto Rico. Students from this lab can control during certain times that telescope. It is a huge disc that you might have seen in a movie.
James Bond.
One of the, yes, I forget the name of the movie, but you will be familiar with a large disc in which somebody's walking over a ramp on top of it. But anyway, the, what this does, in essence, is grants students money, scholarships them to work as scientists in physics. I mean, you cannot get this kind of money easily. And so many students, while they might be enticed to do this, don't have the wherewithal to do that. So it's extraordinarily important. The grant is entitled Pulsar Search Partnerships: Attaining Talented Young Hispanic Students Into Careers in Astrophysics. The program has been such a success in recruiting young people into science that is already being replicated in three states, in Wisconsin, in Utah, and in Australia.
Well, Dr. Janey is wonderful. We are so fortunate to have him. He made the statement that if you watch the double oh seven movie, whoever's playing double oh seven at that point had to have a double to go across, but Dr. Janey walks across that all the time, so he's our hero.
And we are invited to do the same.
And you are invited, yes, well, I don't think so. And let me tell you, been there, it's way up there, and it's just a little teeny ladder that goes across to this big thing that hangs, and it is quite intimidating.
He was talking about one of his students who was accepted into MIT and who has decided to stay here and delay going to MIT for two more years so he can be part of this scientific project. So you never know how it's going to impact your students, the community, and science in the end result. So if you bump into Rick Janey, he's the one with a grin from ear to ear this week. We signed an important memorandum of understanding this week with the Association of Maquiladoras of Matamoros. The MOU emphasizes two types of education for the maquila employees, both a traditional academic degree as well as one specialized in workforce training. We can offer that onsite. In addition, as you know, there are a hundred and twenty-two member maquilas that can be part of this work. They range from traditional manufacturing topics to sociological effects of changing the workplace in terms of the courses. We're very excited also about the internship opportunities that it's gonna provide some of our students, who will now be able to connect with the maquilas and actually work there prior to graduating from the university. The third item has to do with our jazz band. As you know, our jazz band has become famous because it's been invited to Notre Dame twice, and the only way you get there is by invitation, and even when you get invited, there's still a jury, a blind jury competition, where you send in a tape of how you play, and then the judges decide without knowing where you're from. We have once again made it through that jury process and have been invited for a third time to go to Notre Dame. So our band leaves next week. They will perform Friday, February the twenty-second, in Washington Hall on the Notre Dame campus. The festival, while on their way, they're gonna go up not by plane, they're gonna go up on a bus, and they are going to perform at Flower Bluff High School in Corpus and also at a concert in Illinois. The band, while there, will also take a tour of Chicago and will attend a concert at the Chicago Symphony Orchestra. I want to congratulate all of you, Terry Tomlin, who is the Director of the One O'Clock Jazz Band and the Professor in Fine Arts, who started this band and continues to grow it every year. Congratulations. More good news now from the world of chess. Just off the press, really, our university chess team member Axel Bachmann, this last year was named the two thousand and seven Sportsman of the Year in Paraguay, his home country. That's a very important thing to be selected, because that is, it includes soccer, it includes chess, includes all sports activities. So he was selected as a very young recipient of that award. Recently, he's a freshman, by the way, recently, the eighteen-year-old international business major achieved the highest title in chess. After passing the two thousand five hundred rating level and obtaining the favorable results against other grandmasters, he has become a grandmaster himself. This is awarded to only the top point zero two percent of players worldwide when they receive the title. There are only nine, about nine hundred people in the entire world who have made this achievement. Axel began playing chess when he was five years old with his father, but he quickly learned it could also open doors for him, and when he heard that we sponsored a chess team, that he could play competitive chess here, and that we would scholarship chess players, he came to UT Brownsville. Last semester, Axel helped his team take sixth place at the Pan American Intercollegiate Chess Championship. He also won the award for the top player on the first board. The best player on each team competes on that first board, so he beat the best players of Duke, Stanford, Yale, and all of the other schools that were at that competition. Bachmann is presently competing in the Torneo Ibero Americano Morelia two thousand and eight, which features twenty-four of the top players from Latin America and Spain. And one of the things that Rusty, Rusty Harwood said about him is that he also is a wonderful sportsman, and with sportsman-like humbleness as he plays, which is rare in any field, chess included. So if you bump into Axel, he's the other kid with a grin. And by the way, apparently, Associated Press was down here interviewing him for a story, so we'll get in the news for other reasons. Somebody else received an award that you should know about, and that's Larry Loff. Restoring old buildings is not only challenging and it's exciting, but it's also become Larry's passion. You know he has deep family roots in the Brownsville area. He tirelessly volunteered as our historical building preservationist. His mission of the past twenty years has been to ensure the preservation of historic buildings on our campus and in the community. He volunteers all the time, not only for us but with others. When he's not rushing from one project to the next, he's leading a team of carpenters or interns in our Restoration Carpentry Program. But he also serves as Chairman of the Board of the Brownsville Historical Association. So Larry, along with the Brownsville Historical Association Executive Director Priscilla Rodriguez, received a Humanities Texas Award from Governor Rick Perry last month. There are only two awards given in the state of Texas. We received one of them, Larry received one of them, along with Priscilla Rodriguez. The award was presented in the historic Senate Chamber at the State Cabinet in Austin. The award recognizes imaginative leadership in the humanities on a local, regional, and state level, and carries with it an award of five thousand dollars. There will be a celebration on Saturday, March eighth, at the Silman House Museum Complex. We, you know that we credit Larry with doing many things on our campus, the Young House of the Cuento Building, the Lucena House next to the Cuento. And now, he's currently working on the Provost Office, which is the Commandant's quarters over here, Cameron County Historical Commission. He's also working with them to save Our Lady of Visitation Church, a small nineteenth-century brick church on the military highway in Santa Maria.
Madam President, excuse me, what was the name of the award?
It's the Humanities Texas Award.
Thank you.
And finally, the Crider House on Varede's Line Road. He's brought that one back to life. Now, this is a nationally-recognized architectural gem designed by the world-renowned architect Richard Neuford, that probably will gain some national recognition for Larry and certainly for our university soon. So my congratulations to Larry and to the Brownsville Historical Association. I just wanted simply to ask for your help in identifying distinguished alums of this university for the Distinguished Alumnus Award that we would present this year. Nominations are being received, and we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, appreciate it very much. Proposed meeting dates for the board, March twenty-seventh, April twenty-fourth, May nineteenth, and June twenty-sixth. We announced today that Mary Hernandez, our TSC Office Manager, has accepted a position with Business Affairs, correct?
Director.
And so, her last day functioning in that capacity will be Friday. I want to publicly thank you, Mary, for doing such a fine job that you've done, keeping the board informed, in line, and like Zimmerman says, taking care of us. I've seen you blossom the past couple of years. You worked hard to earn your degree while you were working here, and now you've moved on to more demanding endeavors, and I want to thank you on behalf of the board for all your help, and wish you well. I have something for you. Can you approach over here?
Right over to the bench.
On the bench.
Sounds good.
On the Vegas trip.
On behalf of the board, I want to...
Very nice.
Will you still email me and get your...
Till tomorrow.
I knew I was gonna be very nervous if something like this happened at the board meeting, so I just didn't wanna forget what I wanted to say. Thank you for everything, Dr. Garcia, members of the board, staff. I wanna thank you for allowing me to serve you over the last eight years.
You can change your mind.
She's getting better pay.
It's been a wonderful and rewarding opportunity to work for TSC and the board, and the board and Texas Alamos College will always have a very dear place in my heart, not going away. I'm going to be here very close, and like I was telling some of the trustees, my email address will continue to be the same, so I will send you my new extension later, but you, we have very good staff members in the office that will continue to take care of you. Just thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mary Garcia.
Mary, on behalf of all of us in Partnership Affairs, it's going to be tough. The board members perhaps appreciate what Mary has done, but she is excellent. What she's been able to do in the office, she is our organizational memory. She's the one who knows board policy better than anyone. She's more organized than all the rest of us combined, and it's going to be Ms. Martinez's game.
Sounds to me like I'll be VP for Business Affairs.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult to replace Mary. In fact, someone of Mary's caliber is never fully replaceable, and we wish her well in her new job, and we expect that she'll be an unpaid consultant to Partnership Affairs for the next several years. Thank you very much, Mary. So who'll be calling me now?
What do we do now, Mitch?
I don't know, what do we do now? We're in trouble. Well, anyway, Mr. Oliveto is asking me, why are people wearing red today? And I said, I don't know. So with that in mind, Happy Valentine's Day, and may I have motion adjourned? We adjourn.